Not November 14th.
I'm looking at the rule.
As.
The wrong heading.
So we'll change that.
Heading below.
It's time for the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority meeting for the month of December, a regular business meeting. So I'm calling this meeting to order. I have no welcoming or opening remarks. Any announcements from anyone else but me? No? Okay, good. As is our practice, we have three things that we're looking at to approve. We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. We have a motion to approve all bills and payrolls as was presented and actually circulated to us earlier, and a motion to approve the November 14th minutes and the December 5th meeting minutes of our special meeting. So I am opening the floor. Is there any discussion, questions, anything about those three agenda items? Okay, not hearing any. I will entertain a motion to accept all three and a consensus vote.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign. Not hearing any. Those motions now pass. It's time for public comment. There's no public here, so there's no comment. Moving right along. Special presentation not having any. Let's just go into revenue and expenses.
The highlights here are that under line items 09383, we are all about 100% collected, which is our stormwater fees for the year. And we have a couple other line items. We did get the cap grant in, 133,000, so that shows up in this revenue versus expense report. If you recall, in 2022, we budgeted for $500,000 in grant revenue. We know that the breaking news there was NIFWIF has once again, fourth time through, declined to fund our Culp Streams, so, projects. So the authority has to eat that. That is why we're showing a $204,000 deficit for the year. Not to alarm anyone, because we have the money in liquid cash in our reserves, our CDs and our general fund checking account to cover those. But from a budgetary, year-to-date perspective, we are running a deficit because we did not realize the revenue from that grant source.
So that will be funded by our available cash?
Correct. It has been. Those bills are paid.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
Follow-up on that. I did look at the bank account just before this meeting began, and there is over $200,000 remaining in the checking account. We still have a CD as well.
Good. And that CD is for 150?
Correct.
As ever called?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Deborah, payments received? Just an update?
It's been pretty slow. So over the last 30 days, we may have received maybe 10 additional payments in for the delinquent 2022 bills. We were at about 189, and we're at about 179 right now. I think I'm pending one payment that Tammy has to process. We're trying to get a letter out, so I'm waiting on Freedom to get it in the system and attach the bill to the letter. So they've been working on that since last week for a little over a week. I did email them this morning, hoping to get something out today, but I haven't heard back from them today yet. So I'm hoping to send the reminder out to those, which would cost around $120 versus the 1,500 for first-class and certified mail for that amount of people. So I'm thinking if we do send that reminder out, then they would need to pay by December 31st, and then the liens will start getting processed the first of the year.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any questions? Our solicitor is ill today. He's under the weather. So as far as lien filed, that subject is concerned, I think he gave us a lot of detail at the last meeting. I don't know if there's any updates from that, but I think it's safe to say we'll get another update in January, because that's when they'll be going. Okay. Project updates. I was the one who asked that these motions be just put on this agenda. Just so everyone knows, given the last meeting and we had a lot of discussion, I just wanted the authority or and/or the public to make sure they understood what we were doing. So I'm not going to read them. Everybody can read them for themselves. Are there any questions at all about what we did before? Karen, the only thing I have is rehabilitation over there is spelled incorrectly, but it's the second motion, channel wall replacement. So if you could correct that at some point. But other than that, any questions? Okay.
I don't think so.
All right, thank you. Chad, can you talk about our closeout for Culp Run?
Yep, and so I think the first and important note is that Culp Run is substantially complete. We use that word in the construction industry whenever something's, for the most part, done. But as we know, whenever you're doing stream restorations, I reported this a couple of times, that it's not really done for five years, right? So there is going to be a continued maintenance. I want to make sure that everybody expects that and knows that there is a permitting requirement that we report to the EP. We're going to have to do some spraying and stuff. So I'll be following up with you on that probably around January, February. Did get some estimates from Land Studies. Had some conversations with Robbie on what we want to do in-house versus what we want to sub out for that maintenance. But stay tuned, more on that to come. But we did want to make sure, this is a very significant project for the Stormwater Authority, because this is where we're getting all of our pollution reduction credits for our MS4 pollution reduction plan. And we want to make sure that we have this project properly summarized and monumented and documented in our files so that when our annual reports to DEP, this is all up to speed. So Land Studies did provide us with some updates. The first thing is that we needed about 54,000 pounds, and we ended up getting about 107,000 pounds out of this project. So it performed way better than what we anticipated. That's 107,000 pounds of total suspended solid per year. That's our pollution reduction credit. So we have plenty in the bank should DEP ever change anything moving forward. We shouldn't have to do anything more here for quite a while in terms of our pollution reduction plan. So that's really good news there. There's also factors that play along with that with the total phosphorus and total nitrogen, but they don't really affect our MS4 program. They did affect our cap grant. Charles announced it earlier in a budget that we did get that cap money. So we needed to file those numbers for that program, but it doesn't really affect our pollution reduction plan. But those ride along. I just wanted to make mention of those. The results of the project were three acres of floodplain restored, 2,850 lineal feet of degraded channel was restored. Of that, 2,400 lineal feet we were able to get the credits for. That's how we equated to that 107,000 pounds of total suspended solids. 3.4 acres of native meadow were restored. It was the cattle grazing before, and now it's a native meadow. And the finances. So our total construction contract was $600,000. We ended up coming in around 518,000. So that did really well. If you add that to the design between, from the very beginning, I took this all the way back to the beginning, back in 2012, whenever we started doing the feasibility study. So I wanted to make sure we were counting for every last penny that we dumped into this project. And what Land Studies put in for their design, they had a couple of contracts that they put in with grant applications. Went through four rounds of grant. So everything altogether counted about 138,000. So if you add that to the 518,000, you get about $656,000. That's what this project cost. The thing cost totally to the Stormwater Authority. You subtract $189,000 cap grant that we got, so what it cost to the Stormwater Authority was about 467,000.
And originally, as I recall, this was about a $775,000 estimate.
Exactly the number. Exactly the number we were estimating. So getting it below 500,000, I would say is a success.
Yep. And the fact that it was completed on time.
And on time, yep.
Now, will this be on the website, these key pieces of data?
That's what I would suggest. I would say we should put this on the website. I'm going to boil down some of this documentation I'm working with Land Studies on to kind of a one simple summary sheet. And then also, Land Studies already did a flyover of their own where they have some pictures, with their drone footage, but the county did some drone footage as well. So I haven't seen that drone footage yet, but I would say that there is some type of a visual that we can also put on the website. I don't know if it's a video clip from that or if it'll be photos or something like that, but I feel like it is an important project, like I said, and I think we should capture it visually in addition to some of our stat sheet.
That would be great if we put it before and after.
Yep. So I think we work on that over the next month or a few years.
Yes, Wes?
So we accounted for more reduction of suspended solids than we needed to. Now, when you refer to what our requirement was, where that was for the entire five-year period of the permit, are we permitted to carry that, or is that per year?
It's a per-year reduction, yep. Once you have a stream restored, you know, every single time it rains, there's pollutants going in. So they say per year, we needed to reduce our pollutants by 54,000 pounds per year. And at this point, we can say that we're reducing the pollutants by 107,000 pounds.
So are we able to carry that forward to our next permit cycle?
That will carry on in perpetuity.
Hot dog.
Because the next permit cycle, we have to reduce it again by 10%, correct?
I haven't heard that yet.
Okay.
I haven't heard that yet.
When we first got that, maybe I misunderstood. I was like, well, if you reduce it by 10% and then recalculate 10% again.
Yeah, no, no.
Forever, that doesn't seem like that would be possible.
No, I don't think. So I'm not going to say that they're not going to change the 10%.
Like the new 10% will be 9%, you know? That makes sense?
Yeah.
I was like, this will just go. Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't work like another 10%. It would basically say that they're moving their 10% to 20, but I won't be surprised if they don't move the needle a lot.
That'll have to be something eventually. Okay.
But I haven't heard anything official yet on whether or not they're going to require a higher percentage.
Okay. So I know sometimes you can carry things forward and sometimes you can't.
Right. As far as I know, this is an annual thing, so it's in perpetuity. We can carry it on.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good investment.
Absolutely.
Pat?
Okay, two things. First of all, you're talking about getting that word out there, and the Watershed Alliance is going to have a blurb in our January newsletter notice based on public information, nothing special. And during that discussion with Land Studies, they want to do a presentation, which we're looking at February, so.
That would be great.
The Watershed Alliance has access to the Ag Center facility, so we can set that up and get the word out. So just to let you know, we're in the process of doing that. On another note here, so we reduced a little over 54,000 pounds. Well, we reduced more than that, but a requirement was 54,000, so we almost doubled the required.
Virtually doubled it.
Okay, so if you do the math, if it costs half a million to get 50,000, roughly $10 per pound, is there an open market that we could?
I like the way you think. Can we sell credits?
Well, there are credit markets out there. I don't know if there is for this one.
Well, that's true. No, like carbon emissions are done that way. They sure are.
Exactly, exactly.
So that'd be one thing. And since we don't need the nitrogen or phosphorus, that's another opportunity. Somebody's out there, and if we sold it to them for $10 a pound, save them for going through a large project, I guess. I don't know where you have that kind of discussion.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to your question, Pat, but we did, we have had that conversation in my office. You know, we were just thinking, man, I wish we could sell these things somehow. I don't even know where you would, I don't know if you would have to first check with DEP to see if that's even allowable, but then I don't know how you would market it. I don't know.
Well, is there a market for it? I mean, you know?
It seems to me there would be a possibility, because our watershed, we're in the Hanover MS4, right? So we're in different watersheds, so you can't say that it's married to a watershed. It's just a reduction out there in general. And we do have a working group, right? That I don't know how often, I've been to one of them, but have you been to one recently, Deborah?
There's a group that gets together for MS4, just discussions, and the last one I was at was a little over a month ago.
Yeah, it could be.
They have them quarterly.
That might be an area to introduce the topic.
Okay, I can certainly bring that up. I think the next one's in March.
It'd be worth asking.
Yeah, sure.
Because we have a big credit.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we could sell for $10 a pound.
I think 15 or 20 sounds better.
Well, but it's what it costs us.
We don't know.
And of course, then we would have to have the discussion too, is do we want to sell? Like, would we want to sell it all, or would we want to hang on to some of it just in case?
You'd probably sell half.
Yeah.
And feel comfortable that you have some buffer.
I would think we could confidently sell the overage up till the end of our permit. And then at that point, we still get the 104 pounds per year.
Sell for the period.
Yeah, then you hold back and wait to see what happens to the permit. But I don't know. It seems like an opportunity.
Interesting. Chad, you may want to just ask up at DEP if they're making a market on this.
Yeah, I'm all ears.
You know, and then Deborah, I mean, you're more in the grassroots, folks, if anybody's ever really contemplated this.
Yeah, I'll check around with you.
Because all those dollars can come back to us to fix the infrastructure in town, which we need to do.
Look, we also should, while we have the discussion, talk about what we're saving on nitrogen and phosphorus too.
Right, right.
If there's an opportunity there.
I think it's okay for you. I'll start with, I think Reed, he's a, Reed from Land Studies is a great source for that kind of stuff. So he might, he might know, or at least know the person that I should talk to at DEP to get that conversation going.
That's interesting.
Yep.
Thank you. Good comments.
But I believe that's it for my presentation for the updates for today. More to come on that. We do want to try to finalize this over the next month or two, and I do want to make sure that I get to you guys some estimates, because it is expensive to maintain these improvements over the next couple of years. I mean, we're looking at, one estimate that I saw from Land Studies was around $19,000 per year. So, and that includes, I think, some more things than we need. So I'm going to be getting, having some meeting and following up and trying to whittle that down a little bit. But we will have to make a decision on some of those maintenance items before the spring growing season gets here.
Right.
Yeah.
My question.
What are the maintenance items?
So they have floodplain maintenance yearly, spot treatment of invasive undesirable species, six site visits during the growing season. There's a meadow maintenance yearly, spot treatment of invasive and undesirable species, six visits. Meadow mowing yearly, which that's one thing that I don't think that we should have to do. I'm hoping that the National Park Service is going to take care of the mowing. We just got to make sure that there is a horrid carturally correct time to do that after they seed and stuff. So we have to make sure that we coach them through that, but they may end up being able to do that for us. And then there's some monitoring and reporting to DEP on an annual basis that needs to happen. And that, again, has to happen for the next five years according to our permit, so.
I was just trying to get a feel for how much of it was like plant-based. Like, we do have landscaping companies locally that might be able to do some of it.
Some of the spraying the invasive species.
That, yeah, they just need a permit, and anything in that meadow, I think, should go back to the park, the maintenance of the meadow. I don't see it as part of our responsibility.
Well, it's their land.
I agree. I agree, Pat.
And their meadow.
Right.
Yeah, I agree on that one. So I want to have a follow-up conversation with them, and then I'll probably be talking to you guys in, like I said, in January, February. I just have to beat the spring growing season. That's kind of the deadline for having a decision on that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. New business? Charles, you want to talk about the 2023 budget?
So I don't have anything to add. We talked about the budget at the November meeting.
We did.
The board thought we'd go ahead and advertise that. It has been out there for the public to review since the 28th of November. So unless there are specific points you would like to revisit, we can do that.
Any questions from anybody on the board? We did discuss this last time, and we know that this is incorporated into the Borough of Gettysburg's budget.
It is. They are tied in that the authority will give reimbursements back to the Borough for services rendered. So should you want to tweak some of that, it'll tweak.
Back, yeah.
Yeah. The other half of the equation.
Right, right, right. And we talked about the tweaking last time.
Right.
And I think we went away with the feeling that, okay, we understand what's going on. We understand the numbers. The expenses were reduced for staffing and so forth. That money went into projects, this is in a nutshell, and everything else is pretty much the same and is tied to what the revenue numbers are projected for next year. So, any questions? Not hearing any. I will read this motion, and then we can, I'll entertain a motion. A motion to adopt the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority budget for fiscal year 2023, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Stormwater Fund in the amount of $515,845, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $515,845.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
None.
So that passes. Meeting dates, Charles?
So the Authority Board did pass a motion similar to this last year, establishing your meeting dates for the upcoming fiscal year. These are monthly. As we know, many of those meetings were canceled in 2022 based on lack of agenda items to discuss at a business meeting. So we could certainly do the same here. This is, passing all these at once means we advertise them all at once, saving some money as opposed to having to advertise monthly.
Okay. Any discussion on any of this and any dates? And I presume holidays were considered?
Yes, you'll notice there is one off in October where it's the Tuesday of 10th of October.
Right. Okay. Hearing no comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept this motion for meeting dates as presented.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign. Not hearing any. This list of meeting dates for 2023 passes. Thank you very much. Time for public comment. No public here, so no comment. Thank you. I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I thought we had a successful year, busy year. We got a lot of things accomplished, and there's a lot more to do. And I'd like to thank everybody for their time spent on the board and also the staff. Thank you very much, all of you, and then the folks who report to you, especially Robbie's crew, who really, they do a great job every day. A lot of heavy lifting. Some of that's literal. So any other comments from the board or anything, anybody?
I would like to thank you for your leadership.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. It's a lot to do, a lot more to do.
Yeah, I'm sure there is.
Yep. You have a lot of research coming up. Yep.
Say, we're talking about the minutes here before everyone came in.
Yep, yep. I am researching the walls. And I've, just for the record, just so you know, I've researched anything that had to do with the word Tiber or Stevens Run from 1921 to '33 so far. I'm going through the minutes and also the ordinances in that period of time. And so far, I've not hit upon the silver bullet that indicates who built the walls or who is responsible for them.
Are you looking at planning commission minutes too?
No. No, no, please, please.
That might be the place.
Yeah, and I don't know how far the planning commission goes back.
Not long when I started, yeah.
I've been searching, and Sarah has been a great big help. Sarah Stoll.
Planning commission probably wouldn't have existed before zoning, I would think.
Right, yeah.
And that came to the borough pretty late.
Well, because I've not.
Yeah, that's pretty late.
Yeah, in that period of time, there's no mention of zoning, no mention of planning commission. It's a mentioning of the highway department, sewer, and water.
When you get to the 60s, early 70s, you might want to add Title III funding to your list. A lot of the Tiber walls were built with Title III funding. It was federal money.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was federal money, federal or state.
And that was 60s and 70s?
Yeah. The borough had separate bank accounts for it. The money came in, they had a separate checking account and everything else for it.
Interesting. I will look at that. Thank you. Maybe there was discussion at the borough. But so far, no ordinances.
I'll plunge on, so.
Okay, thank you.
Leroy Angel wheeled a lot of the walls.
I know he did. I did. He was terrific contractor. Okay, thank you all. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. We're out of here.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
And welcome to the December business meeting of the Borough Council of Gettysburg. All please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Legions. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, and thank you for joining us. Few announcements. An executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 70885 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes: One, to discuss matters involving the employment, the terms, conditions, and benefits of employment of borough employees; and two, to review and discuss matters of borough business which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. Okay, we have the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the December 12th, 2022 agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, that's how we'll do it. Mr. Law with the motion, Ms. Lawson with the second. Any questions or comments about the agenda? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, and then we have our minutes from the meeting of November 14th and the work session of November 28th. Before we have that motion, are there any known corrections to those minutes?
Yes, I have one.
Okay, which set are we in?
For the work session on the 28th, it concludes that we adjourned to an executive session, and we did not have an executive session.
That's true. Okay. All right, so we can get that correction in there. Any other corrections? All right, if not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting of November 14th, 2022, and council work session of November 28th, 2022, as amended?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments about the minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to public comment. Items on the agenda. Name and address, please, five minutes. Anyone for public comment in our first section? Okay, seeing none, we will head on to the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Code Enforcement. I assume you are sitting in this evening, Mr. Grifio. Okay. Sitting in this evening, Mr. Grifio. Okay.
Yep, you have Carly's report and my report. If you have any questions with it, I can do my best to answer.
Any questions related to planning, zoning, or code enforcement this week? Pardon me, this month? Okay, if not, thank you. Then on to historic environmental preservation is English.
Thank you. You'll have my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Our December hard meeting was canceled due to lack of items on the agenda. Our next meeting will be January eighteenth.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Ms. English? We do have a number of items there on the hard motion this evening. Okay, if not, can I ask someone make that hard motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, HARB, following its review on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and grant certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA twenty-two dash zero one one one, major project, three thirteen North Stratton Street, Regina G. Piper, to approve the design only for the proposed new carport structure pending it must meet building code compliance as submitted, and is consistent with the Gettysburg Design Guide as presented to the board in the application dated October seventh, two thousand twenty-two. COA dash twenty-two zero one one two, critical project, seventeen Chambersburg Street, Carl Yingling, to approve the application as submitted to replace and re-point deteriorating brick on the east side of the third floor wall and repaint the brick using brick paint that is consistent with the Secretary of Interior Guidelines and the Gettysburg Design Guide as presented to the board in the application dated October three, two thousand twenty-two. COA dash two-two zero two-one-seven, major project, one twenty-four, West High Street, Alex and Lizbeth Amato, to approve the application as submitted with the additional information for the proposed windows and door, and that the contemporary project is not precluded by the Secretary of the Interior Guidelines and the Gettysburg Design Guide as presented to the board in the application dated October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. COA dash two-two zero one two zero, critical project, four Southwest Confederate Avenue, Ian and Ashley Miller, one, to demolish the freestanding garage/wood shed that is consistent with the Gettysburg Code of Ordinance slash Gettysburg Historic District, the Secretary of the Interior Guidelines for demolition, and the Gettysburg Design Guide as presented to the board in the application dated October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. Two, to approve the application as submitted for the new garage construction design with additional information for the additional light fixture information to provided, to be provided to the board that is consistent with the Secretary of the Interior Guidelines and the Gettysburg Design Guide for new construction in the application dated October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. Three, to approve the application as submitted for the new poolhouse construction with additional light fixture information to be provided to the board that is consistent with the Secretary of Interior Guidelines and the Gettysburg Design Guide as presented to the board in the application dated October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about our hard motion for the month? I would commend the board. You can tell them, I really noted in the meeting minutes that there's an effort being made to work with people that are trying to work through that process. It can be difficult for people that are new to it, and I really appreciate it seeing that. It's, I think we've come a long way with that over the years. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That takes us, any other questions from Ms. English? If not, that takes us to parking. Ms. Fissell?
Good evening. You have my report. I've made all the comparisons as normal. The permits and things are staying the same. Um, we have been short-staffed, but I, we did hire a part-time parking enforcement officer just last week, so hopefully he's trained, getting trained and up and running.
I did note that. That's good to see. Questions from Ms. Fissell outside the motion? Okay, we do have our motion there. That will amend the parking holidays. And really, essentially what this deals with is the addition of the Juneteenth holiday, essentially, is the, the change. I don't think there are any other actual changes after all the discussion that was occurred.
Other than Easter Sunday being.
Easter Sunday, okay.
And Good Friday being deleted.
Deleted, okay. Pardon me. Okay. Tried to, tried to get the, the tape correct. All right, can I have that motion, please, for the parking?
I'll make a motion to enact an ordinance amending Chapter fifteen Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Part Four, Part Five, and Part Ten of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg for the purpose of updating the legal holidays on which payment for on-street and off-street metered parking is accepted, and for the purpose of updating the defined holidays in the borough's regulated parking permit system ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions or comments related to the holiday alteration? I think the one thing that I would note from the work session that I think finally got to be clear is that the holiday is the holiday. Okay, regardless of any day that anyone has off or anything else, the holiday, Christmas is Christmas, Juneteenth is Juneteenth. That's as it is. Okay? Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, any questions for Ms. Fissell? If not, on to public works. Mr. Harbaugh?
Good evening. You all should have my report. Just a couple items on my report. Special events, we're winding down with special events for the year. We have one more upcoming. That's New Year's Eve. We're still cleaning up blocks from Merimer's Day and, and the Christmas Festival, hopefully to have them in within the next couple of days. And we're in the middle to end of leaf season, so piles keep showing up and we keep going out and getting them. So we'll, we'll probably stop that by the end of the year.
Hopefully, your, your leaves are swept by now.
Hopefully. Well, there, there's a few trees that are coming down late, so.
I used to have a tree like that, that it just seemed like it was the last of the borough to fall.
Yeah. Couple residents have called. They said, they have, some late trees that fell, so.
Yeah, we did maple like that.
Yeah.
All right.
I have not ranked.
Are you looking to hire like a high school student?
Just need a day off.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Harbaugh? I do always note the efficiency of how these folks do with the deployment of the blocks and the collection, and try to keep that under the hours that are already in the budget. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, the engineer, Mr. Clayball?
Good evening, everyone. I'd really have anything to add to my written engineer's report. There are two motions under, under my tab here. I just wanted to give you a cou- a couple of blurbs about those. These are two grant applications that we're looking to submit for. They have that acronym, ARPA, in it. It's the, it's the COVID-nineteen money that was given through the H-2O program. I did give you a briefing on this at your workshop meeting, so this is what we're talking about. The, the first one there on your, on your agenda is for the larger of the two grants, and then the second one is for the smaller of those two grants. The larger one is over five hundred thousand dollar projects, and the smaller one's under five hundred thousand dollar projects. What we're looking to submit for, for that, for the larger one, it's a, it's the stormwater pipes that includes our Chambersburg Street stormwater pipe that we know has been failing, and our total estimate for that project's around one point eight million dollars. As a reminder, what we discussed is there is a fifty percent match for that. We do know that this, the, we've been successful with getting some other grants that are associated with the Gettysburg Interloop Project there, so that we're hoping that we're going to be able to boil down the match requirement to less than half. Half would be a little over nine hundred thousand, but we think we can use some of the other grant applications to be able to get that down to a little over five hundred thousand dollars. We do have, the Stormwater Authority also made motions on both of these two agenda items, so that they understand that that's ultimately who would be funding this, since they're, they're water resource-related components if we should need to come up with some match money. The reason why it's on your agenda and not theirs is because you guys own it. So that was the big issue with, with the, Stevens Run Wall project. We weren't sure about the ownership, and that's why it's, again, that's why it's on your agenda, because the borough would be the applicant for these things, and then ultimately, the Stormwater Authority would just be paying that match requirement, should we be lucky enough to get these grant applications, so.
Chad, if I'm correct, we discussed the Stormwater Authority will essentially also pay for the cost to apply and so forth, correct?
That's exactly right, yep.
Yeah, so the, the Stormwater Authority pays, but under the H-2O grant program, the owner of the utility, or in this case, the facility, must be the applicant.
And essentially, the Stormwater Authority doesn't own any of these stormwater pipes, right? They're all the, they're all the borough's pipes, so. I don't really think, oh, and the second one there is just for the Stevens Run Channel Wall Replacements. That, again, that's grant applications for under five hundred thousand, so we're going to try to max that out. We do feel like that we have clear ownership on some, on up to about five hundred thousand dollars worth of walls that we can apply for there. That one only has a fifteen percent match, so it'd be seventy-five thousand that the Stormwater Authority would have to come up, up with. But I, I mean, I think it's important to note that that is going to be a topic of conversation as we move forward, because maybe we can get a five hundred thousand dollars worth of them replaced, but we know that there's about four million dollars' worth of walls that need replaced. So it's going to be something that we're going to be dealing with a lot next year. So hopefully, we get some grant money here to kind of chip away at that. We'll see.
And related to those walls, Mr. Malawiki, the, the Chair of the Stormwater Authority, reported this evening. You know, he is in process of working through minutes. He's in the nineteen thirties, I believe, trying to determine if there is a definitive moment for any of these various sections. And that's how I think we, we kind of have to look at it at this point, or, or sections, rather than as one singular item.
Like in terms of ownership?
Yeah, and, and the whole package. I mean, they're made out of different materials. They're constructed at different times. Did the borough have a role? He, he told me that he had located in, I think, the twenties, not related to the walls, but there was a time when, uh, I think it was as late as the twenties, the residents of Spring Avenue thought that there wasn't enough gravel on Springs Avenue. So they paid for half, and the borough paid for half. And so he's looking to see if there are similar arrangements for walls. He has not found anything definitive about any of it yet, but he's steadily poring through.
Wow.
Which I'd have to commend him, because I'm sure that's a great savings to the borough and the Stormwater Authority that he is doing that. We certainly could be paying someone to do that for untold hours. No offense, Chad, but I don't need to pay CSDN.
No, I don't, I don't want to do that.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars for you to go find someone to read that. I have a feeling you'd be going to find someone. I don't need to pay them to do it, if Mr. Malawiki is so gracious. So, I mean, these are a big deal. This is a, we're talking about a lot of money here. We're also talking about a lot of exposure and liability, though. And I think that, you know, hopefully, long ago, we kind of crossed the, the bridge of that, hey, Washington Street, the Chambersburg Street area there, Phase B two needs done from a stormwater standpoint. And I think that the walls are also something that we become aware of, that, you know, these sections, this is the section there behind the Dollar General, correct?
That's, that's one of the sections.
One of the sections. There's a few that are definitely ours. We have an alley that, you know, touches.
Exactly.
So. All right, can I, someone make the first motion there, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion authorizing the grant application submittal for the COVID-nineteen ARPA water H-2O grant to fund water resource components, including the Chambersburg Street stormpipe replacement of the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B project.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is for the, the larger of the two. Any questions or comments related to that grant application? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, next we go to the, the smaller of the two.
I'll make a motion authorizing the grant application submittal for the COVID-nineteen ARPA PA Small Water and Sewer Grant to fund components of the Stevens Run Channel Wall Replacement and Rehabilitation Project.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Either Mr. Moon or Mr. Berger, take your pick, sir. Any questions or comments? Okay, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing none. Any questions for Mr. Clayball? Okay, on to the Police Department. Chief Lenny, sir.
You all have my report. I would like to just point out some things really quickly. Number one, the, the blurb one here about the arson to the rear dominoes really doesn't do the work done by Detective Evans and Sergeant Pruey Justice. It was just an incredible diligent job of tracking down suspects, tracking down videos, interviewing, talking to employers. And, and frankly, the, the arson behind dominoes wasn't the most serious one they solved. It was the, the one out on Strabane.
Yeah.
Which, that, that was solved and done by the same culprit, if you will. So just an incredibly good job of police work, and I would just like to give those two officers accolades for doing such a fine job. Secondly, I don't know if you saw it today or not, but there was a deer found its way into the blue and gray. And Officer Holden, Officer Panis and Sergeant Pruey did, again, an excellent job. Believe it or not, Officer Holden wrestled the deer to the ground, and they kind of, of, uh, flex tied or flex cuffed the, the legs together, brought the deer out of the blue and gray, took it out into the countryside and released it on a farm. So the deer was not put down. The deer was taken back out, and it was, it was, it was a rather ingenious solution to something that, that I was kind of proud those guys put their heads together and came up with. And the deer was a little cut up from going through a window, but it was not put down and released back to Mother Nature, if you will. So that, there are the two things that, that I wanted to touch on. The third thing is Mr. Lawver's question, no more crashes at Howard and Middle, except for the one towards the end of last month. But again, answer any questions you'd like on my report, but I just felt I needed to talk a little more about the wonderful job that the officers did, those two particular instances.
Questions for Chief Lenny? Okay, all right. Went the whole way to the top of the mountain. I could have just gone to the blue and gray. Looking for a deer and can't find him, and they're in the blue and gray.
Apparently, they tried to get into the school. I guess they have that on video as well, so.
Well, when I was a student at Eisenhower, they had one somehow get in the, the lower level through a relatively small opening. They managed, back when we had computer labs. One computer lab, about twelve machines got in there and tore it.
She sure did get into the blue and gray.
Well, I hope they get that fixed.
Last luck.
All right, if there are no questions for Chief Lenny, we'll go on to the Office of the Manager and Treasurer. Anything, Ms. Stone, report?
I don't have anything other than what's in the packet.
Okay, Mr. Gable?
I have nothing formal to add to my written report. If there's questions on anything, there's a whole series of budget-related motions. The only thing I would add to it is, as of Friday, there was just over two point two million dollars in the borough's general fund checking account. I would note that's fairly high compared to other November thirtieth dates. That's good news. So as we get into January, you might want to figure out, have a discussion on where we want to put some of that excess cash, because I think we'll have a little legal room to work with there.
Okay. Any questions for the manager before we start the motion? Anything unrelated to motions? We'll have an opportunity at the end again, but because there's so much going on here, just wanted to give that opportunity. All right, first is a, a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented. Someone make that, please.
I'll make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any questions or comments about the bills? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, next is the distribution of the Eichelberger Staley Funds. We have three hundred dollars that is now entrusted to the community foundation, and that will be distributed to, I know, I'm still here.
Yeah, we, we got a list of names from the Office of Aging.
Yeah, Office of Aging, sorry, yeah. So, uh, motion, someone make that motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the distribution of the Eichelberger Stale.
That's how I've always said it.
Staley Funds to borough residents as required and recommended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, next are the authorizations to transfer the funds to Pliggett. Mr. Gable, do you want to explain that a little bit further?
Sure. The Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust is essentially, it's a consortium of municipalities, government agencies that pool their resources, their reserve funds, if you will. if you will. Not necessarily all reserve funds, but in our case, it would be our reserve funds here for the Borough to get a better return on investment. Right now, most of our reserve funds are at ACMB Bank at a very low interest rate. .05% is what most of our CDs are currently at. Currently, it's a 3% return at Pliggett. So the concept here is to get a better rate of return on the Borough's reserve funds.
I know we discussed that, but in terms of the Borough's access to those funds, we can, they're more or less month to month, right?
If that's the type of fund you want to invest in.
There's a variety.
Yes, there's a variety. But you could get something similar to a CD where things are tied up for several months at a time, or you can just put it in and have access to it when you need that.
And previously, we've kind of bought CDs that were fractions of the amount at different increments, so we can access it needed. So we'll probably be looking at something similar. All right, someone make that motion, please?
I'll make a motion to authorize the Borough Manager, Charles R. Gable, and the Borough Assistant Manager, Sarah L. Stoll, to transfer fund balance reserve money to the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, Pliggett, from the following governmental funds. Fund One, the general fund; Fund 18, Capital Projects Fund; Fund 30, Capital Reserve Fund; Fund 23, Debt Services Fund; Fund 40, Revolving Loan Fund; and Fund 96, American Rescue Plan Fund, ARPA.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about Pliggett? Should be a very good change. And if you're wondering, yes, we can keep any proceeds. We make off the ARPA funds in the interim before we use them.
Thank you for pointing that out. I was going to make the same point.
That's a big, it is, thing to know. All right, no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is our reappointment of Mr. Berger.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing Christopher Berger as a member of the Gettysburg Municipal Authority for a five-year term commencing January 2023 and expiring in January 2028.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I'd like to thank Chris for being willing to continue fulfilling this role. It's crucial for us to have a voice in that body, and I really appreciate you doing this again.
Thank you. Always critical to find responsible people for these roles. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next for Ms. Kip.
I'll make a motion appoint Sarah Kip as a member of the Gettysburg Borough Planning Commission for a four-year term commencing in January 2023 and expiring in January 2027.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I will reiterate what I just said for Chris. Ms. Kip has very graciously agreed to renew her term, and our government depends on people who are willing to serve in this capacity, so I just want to extend my personal thanks to Ms. Kip as well.
Yeah, that's one of those commissions, if they don't have enough people, they can't act. So it's very critical to get this done. I think I put the same comment for responsible folks. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to the bid. Mr. Gable, do you want to just briefly explain this?
So, the, this result, this motion is a result of many months of research between Harry Eastman and our accountant, Tammy Murdorff. What this began with was delinquent taxes on some of the assessments by the Business Improvement District, the Steinware Bid. Once taxes that are due in arrears, they're collected by the Tax Claim Bureau, which is collected by the county. Subsequently, the county would remit those taxes to the Borough without an itemization of what is actually Gettysburg Borough's tax revenue versus what the bid's tax revenue is. All was a clerical error that was unnoticed by any one of us here in the Borough infrastructure, and certainly not noticed by the county collection agency either. The bid asked us, discovered it, and asked us to look into it, so we now know those numbers. And so what happens here is this settles up the difference between what the bid owes the Borough from a grant for the Steinware Bid, Steinware Phase Two project, I think that was completed in 2013. There is about $7,500 that the bid still owes the Borough. But as it turns out, the Borough actually owes the bid a little bit more than $9,700 in back taxes that were remitted unknowingly to Gettysburg Borough. So this motion forgives the remainder of that loan and then authorizes a check in the amount of $2,802.96 to be given to the bid. And then both organizations are even at that point.
Okay. There is a provision, then, also essentially agreeing for the, for the Borough and the bid to cooperate going forward in case this occurs. But I do note that the reports, or at least it's been indicated, that the reports now coming from the Adams County Tax Claim Bureau are indicating whether or not any bid funds are included in that. Previously, it was shown as interim taxes, so it had every appearance that those funds were actually Borough funds, but that was erroneous.
I know this is something that you, both of you and Tammy, Mr. Murdorff, worked very hard to try to resolve, but this is complicated. So thank you. Can someone make that motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt and authorize entry into a settlement agreement with Steinware Avenue Heart of Gettysburg, Inc., relative to the remittance of delinquent bid special assessments mistakenly paid to the Borough of Gettysburg by the Adams County Tax Claim Bureau, and to authorize and ratify the application of $9,705.92 from the Borough's general fund and transfer of said amount to its debt service fund for the payment in full of the remaining balance of the bid's PIB loan, and to authorize the payment to the bid from the general fund of the amount of $2,802.96 representing the remaining balance of the bid special assessments previously paid to the Borough in error.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Either Mr. Berger or Mr. Lawber, take your pick. Any questions or comments about the repayment?
I do have a comment.
Yes.
I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Eastman was saying last meeting. This was unintentional. It was a software glitch that people are now aware of, and so it won't continue. And it was unintentional, and it was a mistake. The other thing I thought we should do is tell the public what a PIB loan is, the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank Loan. Apparently, municipalities can apply for such loans on behalf of various infrastructure issues within the municipality. And that was what happened in the past, and this is cleaning that up, if you will.
Yeah, I presume this was their share of Steinware Avenue Phase Two?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, and one of the things I think that happens here is that, or happened here, was that, in all fairness to the county office dealing with this, there aren't exactly a lot of business improvement districts around in Adams County. I think this is the only one. So it's unusual to have this issue, and it took a few specific instances to bring it to light, even.
All right, so we have motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The next is our resolution for the FLAPP grant.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize the entry into a reimbursement agreement and memorandum of understanding between the Borough of Gettysburg and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Transportation, in connection with the Borough's grant application made pursuant to the Federal Lands Access Program, FLAPP.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about the grant? This is an administrative mechanism that's necessary for us to use this grant. Certainly, we want to use the monies that are coming to us.
It'd be $800,000 is what we're talking about.
Yeah, $800,000. Yeah, this isn't a small item. That's already on the way. All right, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, if not, we move on then to the Act 172. This is the tax credit, let me make sure this correctly, this is the ordinance. Yes, the ordinance, and then the resolution follows.
I'll make a motion to enact an ordinance pursuant to Pennsylvania Act 172 of 2016 as amended, authorizing certain tax credits against tax liability imposed by the annual tax on real estate and the annual tax on earned income as levied by the Borough of Gettysburg as incentives for the use and benefit of certain individuals who reside in the Borough and who are qualified and certified as active volunteers for the provision of fire protection services in the Borough as provided by and through the Gettysburg Fire Department.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Lawber, do you want to recuse yourself?
Yes.
Or abstain, pardon me, and I will as well? I would comment that this ordinance and this step, this will be the first in Adams County, and my hope is that we can stave off the end of the volunteer fire service. I think I gave an interview some years ago where, you know, it's just not as it once was, and John certainly could probably reflect much better than I can. This is a step we're taking to try to, we literally had people, and one of the least was in writing to the Fire Department, that they moved because of the tax scenario. So hopefully, this is an effort to try to keep people and to convince some of the people that are renting now in the Borough to then buy in the Borough, so that we have that resource. Because if it becomes necessary, and I feel that it will happen at some point, that if one becomes necessary to hire, we'll probably have fewer people, because it'll be incredibly expensive. You know, akin to duplicating the largest, the 24-hour department that is the Police Department, but probably bigger than that, because the equipment's more expensive. So hopefully, we can put that off as long as we can. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just make another, thank you for that, President Heiser. I'll just make another comment that I did, I think, whenever we first workshop this, that anyone that, anything that we can do to have an incentive for people that are here to protect the lives of the Borough, especially volunteers of our Fire Department, if we can have them living here in the Borough, this is the least that we can do, and thanks to them.
So you have two extensions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then we have the accompanying resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution for the purpose of establishing the annual criteria for a volunteer providing fire protection services in the Borough of Gettysburg to be certified as an active volunteer in order to claim certain tax credits against tax liability imposed by the annual tax on real estate and the annual tax on earned income as levied by the Borough of Gettysburg pursuant to the ordinance enacted by the Borough Council pursuant to Pennsylvania Act 172 of 2016 as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Similar, the two same extensions. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to the MOU with the Conservation District. Can someone make that motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the Borough's entry into a memorandum of understanding with the Adams County Conservation District for the Administration of Pennsylvania Chapter 102 Erosion and Sediment Control Rules and Regulations to include the review of erosion and sediment control, ENS, plans, and the administration of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems, NPDES, permit program. Wesley K. Heiser, President of the Borough Council, and Sarah L. Stoll, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, attest, and deliver the proposed memorandum of understanding on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clayball, do you want to comment? We talked about in Stormwater, the Stormwater Authority meeting, about how successful the Culp Run project has been. We're talking about things like erosion and sediment control. Suspended solids were our major item. We're clocked in just about double the permits required.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, that project was very successful. We were able to get 107,000 pounds per year of total suspended solid reductions, and we needed about 54,000 pounds. Yeah, the project that President Heiser was talking about was very successful. The motion that's on your table, it, a lot of municipalities are entering into the same type of MOU. I endorse it. It's a good thing that we team with the County Conservation District to protect the erosion control components. This isn't really anything that's different or out of line than what we have in our Stormwater Management Ordinance. It's consistent with what's required in our Stormwater Ordinance. There is the state law that requires, it's actually a federal law that's passed on by the state for the NPDS permits that are required by it. So this certainly makes sense to go ahead and enter this MOU with the Conservation District to continue basically the same operations that we were already doing.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments? I lost track. Do we have a motion and a
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll make sure. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we go to our Borough Employee Transparency and Accountability Policy.
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the proposed Gettysburg Borough Employee Transparency and Accountability Policy.
Second.
Okay, so we have motion and a second. Questions or comments about the Employee Transparency and Accountability Policy? Okay, so we anticipate starting to put that in effect here in January 2023, as things move forward. All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have our beginning of what I would call the budget motions. Let's start with our fees.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution for the purposes of setting, updating, and confirming the Borough's fees and charges for the issuance of licenses, permits, and the provision of municipal services in the fiscal year of 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the adopting of the license fees for permits and so forth. Any questions or comments?
I believe I missed this workshop. Is this where the, is this just a resolution for the purpose of setting it, or have they already been set, and we're voting on it now?
So this sets them. We had the discussed draft revisions. If we were going to make any changes, we would really need to know. Are there anything specific items? Anything we can highlight at all? We handled most of that during the budget work session. Ones that I would note, most of them were fairly incremental. We did make a change.
There was one massive one.
Well, I was going to note also, though, we, there were things related to permit applications, and I'm trying to remember, it dealt with some sort of cost that we had not accounted for, I thought. I'm trying to remember. Like, the land use went up just slightly, and it was dealing with things that we were doing. I can't recall exactly.
Yeah, that was an incremental change. Regulated rental went 36 to 40.
Yeah.
There was a rewrite of how we deal with special permits related to the fixed fees.
The fixed parade fees.
On the three parade routes.
The big one that was noticed, and this came up, and I think.
Town Guides.
Ms. Barfield might have mentioned, discussed it.
Town Guides, correct.
A few of us did, was Town Guides. So that permit fee went from, I believe.
150 to 300.
I was going to say, I was going to say 125.
I was at that meeting. Now we're calling.
Yeah, that was the big one that, and Ms. Marshall and I actually discussed that a little later. This is not a new problem, not specific to the Town Guides or the walking tours. But the way that we permit various transient businesses is difficult, because how many different categories can you have? I don't know that many people still sell magazines door-to-door or anything of that nature, but if you did, you pay the exact same fee that a food truck does. And the problem is, it just becomes difficult to try to, how many categories can you have? So with this, one thing that came up was if you have an individual that basically operates alone, the way this is structured, it's one permit, you know, one fee versus somebody that operates larger. So that was a bit of a concern, but, you know, I think that we have to kind of try this. try this, and again, there are only so many categories you can have. Any other questions or comments about licenses or fees? If not.
I would, I would note that, just to put a button on that, that fee was never changed from its inception, so it's.
That's true.
Been decades since it was actually first proposed.
Decades?
Decades. Is that an overstatement? Decades?
Do you have any idea?
At least 15, I would say.
I was going to say, I thought it really came about when they started to really, the ghost tours started to become much more numerous, and I remember that, when all of a sudden there were not two or three, but a dozen or more. I think I remember that happening. Okay. So to the motion at hand, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, next takes us to our estimate of revenues and receipts.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2023, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the general fund in the amount of $6,513,890, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $6,513,890.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second has been made. So this is where we start to adopt the budgets as written, and then later, when we adopt the millage, this is how we fund them. So if you have an issue now, would be a good time. Well, it would have been a good time a while ago, but now would be a time to vote no if you disagree. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I'm really happy with this budget product that our staff has produced for us. It's done some really important things. It's expanded our public safety budget. It adds two officers to our squad. It also invests in crucial safety equipment. It invests in our ongoing capital improvement plans. It funds a study rewriting our zoning ordinance, which is long overdue, and it remains tax neutral in a time that is economically very difficult for a lot of people. And I really want to thank our entire staff for this work product.
There's no doubt we are doing some things that are critical and things that, I think some of them are probably pass through, so glad that everyone stepped up to that. Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have our Fire Protection Services Fund.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2023, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Fire Protection Services Fund in the amount of $125,000, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $125,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is more or less a pass through. The borough holds this money basically in trust, and then the fire department supplies receipts. This is your .25 mils that you have for that amount. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, CDBG.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2023, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Fund in the amount of $261,599, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $261,584.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Second, all right. Any questions or comments about our CDBG? And I believe this is Washington Street.
Did you want me to explain the couple dollars difference?
Yeah, it's a 15 dollar discrepancy.
I noticed that also.
So there, there is some residual funds in the CDBG checking account that were borough-funded from many years ago, and the council's never opted to use that, I think, $1,800, so it continues to collect interest every year.
That's what I thought. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments about CDBG? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That takes us to Capital Projects.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2023, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $114,790, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $613,740.
Okay, second, please.
Second.
Second, all right. Questions or comments about the Capital Projects Fund? Okay, and a lot of this deals with, as we, we deal with the funds, things that are spent, and then those transfers we discuss. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us to Debt Service Fund.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2023, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Debt Service Fund in the amount of $639,435, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $640,360.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions or comments about debt services? Okay, paying off our bonds.
So you notice this one is budgeted for a small deficit. That's because we're actually using some of the interest that this fund has been accumulating.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That takes us to our Capital Reserves Fund.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2023, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Capital Reserve Fund in the amount of $1,064, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $192,650.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about our Capital Reserve Fund?
The reason for this big difference is this fund will be trans, some of this money will be transferred to the Capital Projects Fund, which is part of the 600 and some thousand dollars that you just approved two motions ago.
Yep, that's how a lot of this is functioning because of the, well, how we spend the money out of the funds.
Right.
That's what it comes down to. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us to our Liquid Fuels Fund.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2023, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Liquid Fuels Fund in the amount of $175,325, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $87,050.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions or comments about the liquid fuels? Gas tax money at work. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that'll take us to the Revolving Loan Fund.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2023, containing an estimate of annual revenues and receipts for the Revolving Loan Fund in the amount of $17,600, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $15,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Just to note, this fund, this is originally the Kenny's Market money. We do have a program on the books for maintenance or restoration of buildings within the historic district for homeowners that fall within certain income guidelines. This has also been used for items related to the pandemic emergency. We had many small loans, and then we had a bit of a larger loan to one of the restaurants that helped keep them afloat through the, the pandemic emergency timeframe. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, the ARPA Fund.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Borough of Gettysburg budget for fiscal year 2023, containing an estimate of annual revenues for the ARPA Fund in the amount of $1,500, and an estimate of annual expenditures in the amount of $749,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Either Mr. Burger or Mr. Lawler, take your choice. As way of explanation, I know we always say provision of government services, but really what this comes down to is we had, we had to make some decisions during the initial year of the pandemic. We had three public work positions that went unfilled. We had a separation from employment administration, and we had a police officer that was furloughed. And by and large, this represents those salaries and benefits being paid out of those ARPA funds during this time, which we must expend by 2026.
Correct.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then we get to the millage rates.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution fixing the tax rates of the Borough of Gettysburg for fiscal year 2023 at 4.177 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation for general borough purposes, 30 mils on each dollar of occupational assessed valuation for general borough purposes, and at .2500 mils on each dollar of real estate assessed valuation for fire protection service, services appropriations tax purposes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for our millage rates, 4.177 mils, 30 mils, and .25 mils, which are unchanged from 2021. I'll comment that I think at the time, we probably increased them a little bit more than we needed to, but that was a personal opinion, and over time, I think we've seen, Charles and I, as others have observed, that generally, if we kind of maintain around .1 to .15 mils, we're able to stay in the black in terms of our expenditures over time. So we're on that track still. Any questions or comments about the millage rates? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this takes us to our setting of the first general business meeting of council.
I'll make a motion to set the first monthly general business meeting for the Borough Council for fiscal year 2023 on Monday, January 9, 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM, and to authorize the provision of public notice for the business meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize our first meeting of the new year. Any questions or comments? All right, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next motion deals with the general business meeting throughout the year, and really what this does is it allows us to advertise them all at one time, thus realizing it costs savings for the borough and the taxpayers.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
To set monthly general business meetings of the Borough Council for fiscal year 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM on the following dates, and authorize the provision of public notice for the business meetings. Monday, January 9, 2023, Monday, February 13, 2023, Monday, March 13, 2023, Monday, April 10, 2023, Monday, May 8, 2023, Monday, June 12, 2023, Monday, July 10, 2023, Monday, August 14, 2023, Monday, September 11, 2023, Tuesday, October 10, 2023, Monday, November 13, 2023, and Monday, December 11, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second there from Mr. Carr. Any questions or comments about the meeting dates? Keeping the, the second Monday unless there is a holiday. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we have a motion for our work sessions.
I'll make a motion to set monthly work session meetings for the Borough Council for fiscal year 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM on the following dates, and to authorize the provision of public notice for the work session meetings. Monday, January 23, 2023, Tuesday, February 27, 2023, Monday, March 27, 2023, Monday, April 24, 2023, Monday, May 22, 2023, Monday, June 26, 2023, Monday, July 24, 2023, Monday, August 28, 2023, Monday, September 25, 2023, Monday, October 23, 2023, and Monday, November 27, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second there, Mr. Lawler. Any questions or comments about the work session dates? Again, generally, the fourth Monday unless there is a holiday on that date. Legal holiday. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and our last motion deals with the budget work sessions.
I'll make a motion to set the fiscal year 2024 budget work session meetings of the Borough Council for fiscal year 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM on the following dates, and to authorize the provision of public notice for the budget work session meetings. Monday, October 16, 2023, Monday, October 23, 2023, Monday, October 30, 2023, and Monday, November 6, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from either Mr. Burger or Mr. Lawler. Questions or comments about the budget work sessions? Not on Halloween this year. No Halloween. Next year, I should say. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, are there any additional questions for the manager with Ms. Stull? Comments? If not, we'll go to our reports, starting with Ms. Sellers, Main Street.
Good evening, everyone. You have my report real fast. Start out with a thanks from the Steinware bid. That was a long process with great help from the borough cooperating with the county to figure out what exactly happened. So it's nice there's a resolution in place and that there is a provision to make sure that we don't go down that road again. So everything else in my report, it relates to Christmas, as it has forever, but Christmas is now, Christmas is now in the books, and really, it's just a series of thank yous, starting with the borough staff in particular. Certainly, there's, it's a very long list, but in particular, the Public Works Department that did all things from road closures to foosballs to gingerbread houses to everything in between. So thank you to Mr. Harbaugh and his crew, as well as the police department for being on hand, keeping us safe and sound, as well as the borough staff for being the many extra hands of volunteers that really helped bring everything together. The future Gettysburg Welcome Center was turned into that gingerbread house. It was visited by over 1,000 people on that weekend, which I think is a significant number. Really, in addition to being a nice little fundraiser for Main Street, it was really a great eye-opener for people visiting the center of town and asking, why don't you have bathrooms in here right now? And questions of that nature, but really, just getting the word out as to how valuable that property will be once it, you know, once it is fully functional for what it needs to be in the heart of our downtown. And then the last thing right now, Christmas in Gettysburg movie is, is busy all over town. I had the privilege of coordinating with Beau Brinkman and Chris Webb, as well as the borough staff, that I know did an awful lot to facilitate how they would get that B-roll footage happening during the Christmas festival, and a lot of things were happening there. So we have a lot of things to look forward to in that, and Main Street is already busy planning things for 2023, so I'll keep you all posted. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Ms. Sellers? All right, I would comment that the Christmas festival was great, and one of the things that, I know we had so many people work so hard on it, we do so many things, you know, for the tourists to help bring the dollars in, and we did share, you know, a course ride or, you know, carriage ride with some folks from Bedford, which seemed like they were having a great time. But I really liked the Christmas festival in this season. It seems like we, we're really doing something for a lot of the local people. I saw so many people from town and the surrounding area enjoying that. I saw, you know, just a lot of people with smiles on their faces. So thank you for, for all the work, everyone, to keep that happening and, and make that functional. That was great. Thank you.
I had a question about the film. Is that, what kind of distribution is that going to be? Is that a promotional film, or is it, there's a storyline with it?
As I understand it, they have a limited release. They're planning on a theater release with a kind of a grand opening screening, hopefully here, because that would make the most sense, and then they have plans for streaming services, as well as DVD copies and on-hand copies for local shops and things to, to promote. And it's largely, it's, 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 it's an independent film, purposefully, so that they can highlight Gettysburg as a destination, so.
Is it, how is it being funded? I'm just curious. Is it?
Investors.
Investors?
Investors.
So like, the borough isn't, or Main Street hasn't contributed money to that?
They do have investor options and so forth, but they have investors that have, have gotten them their production funds that they need. I know that they will probably be seeking in-kind services and other things as they bring actors and support crew and things here in the new year. So watch for them out there, starting, I believe, mid-January is when things start to come together.
Okay, thanks. I wasn't sure if it was like a pay-to-play kind of thing, that some, sometimes those films are.
No, no, it's already funded, so it's pretty exciting that it's moving forward, so.
Great, thanks.
Excellent. Thanks.
May I just follow up on the Christmas festival? Wasn't, this is a bit of information that doesn't really fit anywhere else in staff's report, so I thought I'd tag, tag it on the end of the Christmas festival report. As council knows, you just did a grand experiment with your event rate in the garage at $15 flat rate for the day. for the day.
It fit in parking. I was going to let it go until January, but. We had November's numbers. I know that December's not over.
Right, so what I'm reporting is just that three-day weekend. Just on Saturday alone, because that was the only date that there was a flat rate in the garage, raised fifty-four hundred and sixty-three dollars, which was a record. For the entire weekend, all parking revenue, meters, garage, pay-by-phone apps was seventeen thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars. By comparison, the last time we had the full festival experience was ninety-nine, seventy-nine. So essentially doubled what we did in 2019. So that means there was a lot of people here spending a lot of money. Great, a great event.
All right, very good. Okay, that takes us to GARA, Mr. Carr.
I have nothing to report right now.
Okay, all right. The municipal authority, Mr. Berger, for five more years, too.
Yeah, I was, I was present at our budget meeting, so I wasn't able to make the meeting.
Sucker jan. No resignations, Chris. All right, the bid, Ms. Butterfield.
December is their annual meeting rather than standard business meeting. And I, this is the season of school musical programs, so I was not in attendance. I'd like to thank Charles, the photo on our agenda of Steinware lights, the trees. It's beautiful.
I cannot claim that. Drew Neal took that picture.
I'm sorry Carly's not here. Please convey to her, Pete, our thanks for her leadership on those trees and lights on Steinware.
You got it. Very good.
Okay, Mayor Freeling, the County Boroughs Association.
The next meeting is January sixteenth.
Back to Ms. Butterfield for the cog.
Yes, the program was to be Robin Fitzpatrick of Economic Development. She was unable to make it suddenly. So George Mauser, who is heading up the broadband task force, jumped in, and there was a slide presentation on what broadband is and who needs it. And at that meeting, it was announced that there was a sixty-five percent turnout for the voting, and the thanks were bestowed on all the poll workers and voters who took part in that. There is a subcommittee collaboration. I sit on that subcommittee, and they're working on a survey so that municipalities and folks within the municipalities can comment on what they lack in collaboration and what they'd like to see happen in the future.
Okay, very good. How about ACTPO?
ACTPO meets in January. They meet quarterly.
Okay, takes us to HABBY.
Yep, HABBY has been busy with the proposed trail out to the new Historical Society building on Biglerville Road. And last Wednesday, December seventh, we had a meeting, and Mr. Clayball and Dennis Hickenthayer from HABBY and I were there along with council members, Mrs. Butterfield and Mr. Berger. We had a public hearing for the neighbors on Broadway, Carlisle, and that went well, and it was good discussion. And those meetings are going to continue. The Historical Society opens its new building in April, so we won't have the trail out there at that point. But we are looking on the west side of Carlisle Street, of extending that sidewalk from five feet to eight feet that would allow for bicycles and pedestrians, and then there would be kind of a diagonal cross on Carlisle Street to get over to the Transitions property. And it's been tricky because Transitions is very much on board. The property itself is owned by another corporation, but they seem to be receptive. So the trail would be behind those sycamores, those beautiful sycamores would not be affected by it, and the trail would go across, and there'd be a bicycle rack out at the Historical Society. We know that students will be using that a lot, both high school students, the college students. We fully expect that some college faculty may even be teaching courses out there, lots of archival information. The other thing I would just mention, especially as a borough resident, and I live in that neighborhood, is we will be working with PennDOT to try to lower the speed limit, because right now the speed limit is forty miles an hour until it hits the borough, which is the, that sidewalk where that sidewalk begins, and then it drops to twenty-five miles an hour. And anybody walking and crossing Carlisle Street there, and I ride my bicycle and walk there a lot, people coming southbound on Biglerville Road, they look ahead at the light at Lincoln and see that green light and gun it to try to make it in time, especially with the speed limit at forty. So it's, you take your life in your hands crossing. So we want to try to, we want to petition PennDOT to lower the speed limit out beyond Howard Avenue from forty to twenty-five miles an hour so that, especially as cars are now will be turning, you know, left or right into that parking lot right before Transitions and then Transitions, it would be a lot safer if that speed limit was down to twenty-five miles an hour. So there's lots of moving parts. I don't know if Mr. Clayball has anything else that you want to add?
That was a great synopsis. I would only add that I think the goal is to fund this with grant funding, so you're familiar with the process. It's a several-year process. Like Patty said, they're going to be opening in April, and obviously we're not going to make that deadline. So the next, after we get this master plan done, the next step is to start applying. They're looking for DCNR funds potentially to fund this, and sometimes you've got to go through multiple rounds of grant applications, and then, so it could end up being three years or so with the path that we have identified.
Thank you for that, yeah. And the other thing I would just add, too, is there's lots of partners. It's, there's two municipalities involved. It's Gettysburg Borough and then Cumberland Township. And then it's the, you know, private corporation Transitions. The National Military Park is out there, as well as the college. So there are lots of partners. There have been lots of meetings behind the scenes with those different, with those different organizations and individuals representing. So it was a good public meeting last week.
Well, I want to thank you and HABBY for taking that on. When that project was initiated, this was something that was identified from the very beginning. I'm glad that there are people in the community that will make it happen, because as I drive by that every day, and the amount of concrete that has been poured, the amount of asphalt that has been laid, to completely ignore the access issue, I drove past today, and that's the first thing I thought I was going back to, well, that's great. We have parking there. There are cars parked there. That's wonderful. And not that I don't want people to be able to drive and park there, but it just seemed ridiculous that something would be that close to town and not accessible, except for literally, you know, walking along the road on a road that no one really should be walking along the side of.
Right. The way it's set up now, without a pedestrian or bicycle path, I mean, you would, it would be safer to get in your car and drive there, actually.
Yeah, I mean, I used to bike on a road.
Students aren't going to do it. Residents that are used to walking aren't going to do it, and it's, so it's going to be.
We biked on the old Harrisburg Road when I was a kid like that, just long enough to get to the next rural road.
Right.
And it was a lot less busy then.
Right. And it would be a nice, actually, since you mentioned the Harrisburg Road, that northern, north trail that goes out Harrisburg Road and goes up to Barlow's Knolls and then crosses over to Howard, that would just be a nice completion of that whole loop, actually. Yeah, thank you.
All right, that takes us to the overdose awareness task force. Mr. Moon?
I have nothing to report from November. We will not be convening in December, but we will meet again in January.
Okay, trail feasibility, Mr. Berger, want to report? Recycling, Ms. Butterfield.
Yes, there is a class, the College Environmental Science Department, in which the students must do a project, a term project. And I have in the past been interviewed by some of those students, and the mayor met a young woman, Tiger Frenette, and I met with her, shared with her some of our handouts and brochures, and probably earned her an A-plus for her project. Robbie got in touch with me about the Christmas tree drop-off and pickup, and that will be in my December article, which should run Saturday. So the public will know all about getting rid of their Christmas trees. The home, at-home Adams County Coalition met, and Mr. Kyle Spees of the Pennsylvania Developers Council spoke on low-income housing tax-exempt credit. It was interesting to hear a developer's view of the housing, affordable housing crisis we are facing. Forever Love Rescue, Sarah and I discussed how they receive their funding from us for trapping and releasing, and that is going smoothly. Sarah, we were right. That's just an outside billing company for them. And the Assembly for South Central Pennsylvania meets on the twenty-first.
Okay. Any elected officials' comments? Start down here with the mayor.
The mayor.
Thank you, President Heiser. I'm just continuing to meet with local leaders and other community leaders and getting out in the community. And I will keep it brief, but I would like to say I'm very thankful to council for adding two new police officers in this year's budget.
All right, anyone down this side for comments? Mr. Lawler?
Wondering where we are with the unsafe poles around town, some of them standing since the one hundred and fiftieth Broadway anniversary.
I now have some information from Mr. Harbaugh that will enable me to write the letter, so.
Thank you, Mary.
President Heiser.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Carr.
As it's the end of our year, and it's my first year, because I'm the first year on council, I wish to thank everybody, staff and council, and in particular Vice President Matthew Moon for your guidance, your ear, your assistance anytime I was confused. I appreciate it.
Most welcome. Anyone else?
Different opinion? Different opinion of council now that you're on it?
I also want to say, I really, you know, a lot of people think, or maybe they think, that we all bicker and don't get along and argue all the time. And I say to them, go back and look at our voting record and how many times we unanimously vote, and watch our workshop meetings when we can discuss even more depth detail. And I think that goes for the staff and the Police Department and council and all of our staff. I think it's a great council. I think it's a great staff, and I think we get along a lot more than people think. And just because we're on completely different sides of the political spectrum, I think we get, we have a lot more in common, and we should all, everyone should all value that and appreciate that more, the things that we have in common, more than our differences.
You're here.
Kind of seems like the appropriate moment to mention it again and also make a, almost sort of a plea or a, you know, ask of the community. As Mr. Carr mentioned, you know, it's important here to have a very solid group of people. And I had said at the beginning of this term that this would be my last. So come the end of 2023, I will be finished. And some of that does have to do with a motion earlier on the agenda here, the Fire Department. We need volunteers, and we need people in all levels of that. My intention is to return there and get more intimately involved back with management and not just running, you know, calls at night and in the evenings when I can't. But with that, it's kind of the plea, because we will get to very soon the nomination season in the calendar for the major political parties, Republicans and Democrats. If you're an independent, you do have until August to circulate what are called nominating papers. But this community really relies on responsible individuals to be stewards of this community. And I think we've had a very fine group here and continue to. But I was telling my students today, and I hate to sound like the history teacher that I am, but we were reading something in the paper about the school board had met and was taking certain actions. And I often tell them, I used to say it more when I had seniors, that, you know, if you stay in the community, or no matter where you move, there are people that are needed to do these things. And too many times, people look at themselves and they say, oh, I couldn't do that. If you can be responsible, you can think, you can read, you can comprehend, it's important that this body and many like it have individuals from all different walks and all different, you know, areas of the community, no matter how you break it down. You could break it down by race or sexuality. You could break down by age, income level. It's important to have such a varying of experiences, too. I look at this group, and one of the things that makes it so strong is the sheer diversity of experience that is here, and people that have worked in different things, and things that I would have no experience with. I don't know anything about food trucks, and I don't have forty years of probably working for, you know, on this, this government, you know, recycling and running a nonprofit like that, and the communications background that Patty has, and the streets of Altoona. Mr. Berger and I are probably closer.
When I was in prison, I like to say.
We're probably more alike in terms of our professional experience than anyone else here, but it really does make a solid group, and I look forward to the year ahead. But I do plead with the public that if you're thinking about this, talk to anyone up here and really consider putting in to be on the ballot, because I know there's going to be at least one and probably more spots available. So please do that.
That takes us to public comment. All right, there's no public comment. We will adjourn to executive session.